Here we are. All right, now that we have a quorum, and there's Michael. Just great. Hi, Michael. All right, so we now have more than a quorum, so I'm calling the Weston Board of Education special meeting to order at 7:02 PM. And our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could stand and say that. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Before we begin the official presentations tonight, I just want to review the purposes of tonight's meeting. First of all, it's for all of us as board members, both old and new, to be refreshed with or gain a common background about the major studies and work, beginning in 2017 and going up to June 2025, that examine the conditions of our four school buildings and defined and prioritize their major needs. This will be a high-level overview given by Colliers and SLAM representatives. The purpose of tonight is also for the board to hear a general summary of the committees that have been formed along the way and their work, as well as the work of the Board of Ed, what the major focus areas were, and any recommendations that came from that work. In addition, our purpose tonight is to gain an understanding from representatives from Colliers and SLAM about the state process, timeline, and requirements for major school construction projects. And finally, the purpose tonight is for board members to share our thoughts about undertaking an ambitious timeline, the topics, the issues, the questions that you think need to be addressed, and suggestions for engaging parents and the larger community. And these thoughts will be the basis from which our EOC and Communication Subcommittee's can work to outline the work ahead. So this is a lot to accomplish in one night, and especially because my aim is to end no later than 9:00 PM, and I would like to beat that if possible. I also want to thank especially our staff members who are out tonight for a special evening that they did not anticipate, and also to thank the representatives from Colliers and SLAM for coming together at such short notice and for being willing to partner with us through this process moving forward. And to any and all members of the public who are listening, and of course, to our board members who also did not anticipate this evening, when you signed up for the beginning of the year. So here we are, and let me turn it over to Superintendent Forty and Phil to make introductions.
Thank you, Debbie. Good evening. Thank you for being here. I'd like to introduce our colleagues and partners in this work who are here with us this evening. From Colliers, we have Scott Pelman and Chuck Warrington. And from SLAM, we have Jim Hogland and Kemp Morehart. And again, thank you for the quick turnaround in this presentation. And we're looking forward to getting a baseline knowledge and some foundational information for our Board of Ed and our community members this evening.
Shall we begin? Do you have any other business, or should we just jump right into it?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Why don't you do an intro, Scott, with us in SLAM real quick?
Pardon?
Why don't we do some quick intros?
Yeah, yeah, I know Erica introduced this, but yeah, my name's Scott Pelman. I'm Associate Director with Colliers Project Leaders. Just real quick background, I've been an architect. First 30 years, I designed and managed school projects, and I've been with Colliers for nine years now, managing school projects for municipalities.
Yeah, Chuck Warrington, good evening, everybody. I'm the Director of Project Management. I lead our Connecticut K-12, Public K-12 Division in Connecticut, and Scott and I are experts in, like to think we're experts in the Office of Grants Administration process. Be happy to answer any questions. I've been with the company about a little over 12 years now, and looking forward to working with you all.
Good evening, and my name is Kemp Morehart. I'm a Principal and Architect with the SLAM Collaborative. I've been with the firm 20 years, been doing K-12 work for 30 of my career. I lead our K-12 practice focusing on the Connecticut market.
And I'm Jim Hogland, Project Manager and Architectural Designer with SLAM, and I've been working on public ed projects for over 25 years. It's something that's really close to my heart.
So I think you can hear that there's a lot of experience in the room tonight, so I think we should be able to answer just about every question you may have, and although the presentation does look a bit formal, we'd like to keep it conversational, so please feel free to ask questions as we go through it. I think that'll be a more effective way of sort of addressing those as we go through the presentation. And as Deborah pointed out, again, it's going to be just a very high-level overview of, you know, what's been done to date, some of the studies, what work has been done, and then talking about the process, the state process of a grant and filing a project with the State of Connecticut, and then really, what are the next steps? What do you need to do to keep the ball moving? So with that, if it's acceptable, if I can share my screen? Okay, is everybody able to see that? Wait a minute, I need to hit the share button there. Okay. Can everybody see my screen?
Yeah, we see it now.
There we go. That's up there. So really quick, just a quick agenda. Again, we're going to talk about what's been completed to date, the grant process, and that involves space standard calculations, state reimbursement. We're going to talk a little bit about what renovation status is, what does it mean, some of the next steps, and ultimately, the goal for a project. So completed to date, you know, you've been at this for quite a while. Back in 2017, Silver Petroselli was engaged, and they did a Phase 1 study, which included a detailed facility condition assessment and options for specific capital projects, not necessarily looked at the different schools, school configurations, but just at capital needs. Their study, their FCA, was fairly detailed. You know, and I think part of the overall reaching of this is there's been a lot of good work done to date, but I don't think you need to recreate it. You know, I think we can move forward, but you know, we've gone ahead and reviewed all of these reports. In 2019, Silver Petroselli was brought back. They did a Phase 2 study. They explored three and four building configurations for the district. Again, did some very high-level budgeting, but didn't really get specific into which projects, what projects, or what that project may be. Again, it was very high level. The FOC, that committee started meeting late in 2020 through mid-2022. Coming out of that, the STEAM Committee was formed and began in the fall of 2021, meeting with the community. My understanding is they received input, discussed different options with the community, and between the FOC and the STEAM Committees, the result of that was a 2022 Tecton Study, Tecton Architects. And they looked at facility optimization. They explored what different options you might be able to do, only from the elementary grades up through the middle school. Their study did not include the high school. Then the EOC Committee was formed. They met in early December of 2022, started exploring renovation and new options. It's important to note at that time that that group did recommend staying with the current four-school configuration. In May 2024, the Board of Ed voted to move the project forward, and Tecton Architects was again retained, and they completed an educational specification for 6-8 middle school. That was the only ed spec they did, but the the result coming out of their earlier study was that the facility that required the most attention, the immediate need, was the middle school. So they were directed to create an ed spec for that school. Later that same year, Colliers was brought in. Again, we then went ahead and we reviewed all of the previous reports, the Tecton Reports, the Silver Petroselli Reports, and we issued a summary of that information and recommendations on a path forward, and I believe Phil may have provided the committee an updated report. I did update that last week, was originally issued, I think, late in 2024. And really just talked about the work that had been done, the different studies evaluations, the facility condition assessment, and again, didn't really need to recreate that, but there were some gaps. You know, some of the financial information, looking at either a renovation or a new option, used the same per-square-foot numbers to sort of calculate those costs. It wasn't really project-specific. There was some discussion of renovation, but it was never really explored, was renovation a possibility for the district? Would the building itself support that? Again, that's something we're going to address a little bit further into the presentation, and just discuss what does renovation mean, what would it do for you versus a new school? That December, our understanding is the Board voted in favor of maintaining, again, the four-school campus model. And with that, based on the recommendation from Colliers, we put an RFP out, and SLAM, Mr. Morehart and Mr. Hogland, who are here with us from this evening representing SLAM, were selected to perform a renovator's new analysis of the existing middle school. And the first phase of that task has been completed. I believe, Phil, there was a, their executive summary report was attached to the updated Collier summary that we sent the end of last week. And that initial analysis confirmed that, on a very high level, the structural system of the existing building would be able to support being renovated. And with that, I'm going to stop there for a minute, because I've gone through the first two slides, and I'll just see if there's any questions, either for Colliers on the process, or potentially SLAM on that first phase of the renovation review.
I just have a question, just some of the initials. I happen to know what the FOC Committee means. Can someone fill us in, fill the rest of us in? Is that the Facilities Optimization Committee?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, and was that, I think that also included members from the town government? Am I right about that as well?
That is correct. That included a cross-section of both the Board, represented from the Board of Finance, Board of Education, and also the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, all right. I just think as, you know, people coming to this presentation, you know, we're going to leave it up online, et cetera. I just wanted to explain the initials that are up there, so that's helpful. Thank you. And then the EOC, that's a Board of Ed Subcommittee, am I right? That's the Educational Optimization Committee?
Correct, so the, correct, that came right after the FOC.
Got it. Okay.
I also have a similar basic question, just to provide context. Can somebody please explain the difference between all of these organizations and their purposes, and why they are all involved?
Yeah, if you want, Phil, I could take a crack at that. So there's a couple, two major entities that you're hearing, so Silver Petroselli, Associates, and Tecton Architects, and the SLAM Collaborative are all professional architecture firms. All three firms do specialize, have a heavy amount of expertise in school construction and design. And we're engaged, obviously, in the different timeframes throughout the project. Colliers, we're what we call an owner's project manager. As Scott mentioned, he's an architect, I'm an engineer by background. What we do is we help districts and owners in many different types of projects, but we specialize in education and leading, managing, facilitating school construction projects, guiding districts on the process, kind of like we're talking about now. We help them build budgets. And we also want a project, becomes a project that's passed with funding, it is executed. If we're brought on, we help you manage a project. We manage the financials. We help you select the designers, contractors, watch the quality of the work. Most importantly, we help you file all the paperwork with the State of Connecticut, the Office of Grants Administration. You might hear that acronym of OGA. And that's what Scott and our team does to basically ensure you're maximizing your reimbursement and getting what you're paying for. I kind of compare it to go to court, not small claims. You typically hire an attorney because they know the law and they represent you. Similarly, we know construction, and we represent you as well. So I kind of make that kind of slight comparison. But we were brought on, as mentioned, in 2024, a little over a year ago, to kind of help look at all the studies and kind of figure, what do we, you know, where do we go from here? Because there's a lot of studies and a lot of information, so that's why we were brought in to hopefully continue to help the district and come up with a plan.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then what's the difference? How do you differ from Silver Petroselli and Tecton, and then now SLAM is involved?
Yeah, so if they were brought on board, so they're licensed architects that we don't design. So at Colliers, we don't do any design. Scott used to. I used to do so myself. But we don't design it. We manage process, budgets, schedules. And basically, we're like the right arm for a district. We provide an extended expertise to your staff, to Phil, and Mike, and Erica, and the town as a whole, if you will, where if SLAM was to engage to design this project, they would actually take the educational specs, specifications, and put that plan onto a set of plans and specs in paper, so that it could be bid out to a contractor to eventually construct. And we would help select the architect. We review their designs. We help to do the estimating, make sure we're maintaining on budget. But they do the design. We help you, as an owner's rep, manage the process.
And I think just the difference is maybe just to expand in that, you know, we weren't involved in the initial hiring of Silver Petroselli or Tecton, your first two architects you dealt with, that did the facility evaluations. But normally, you'd put together a proposal request, advertise for the services, and interview the different teams and look at their costs. So normally, you know, that's part of the selection process. Those first two studies, Silver Petroselli was selected from a specific scope of work. Then Tecton was hired, and then once Colliers came on board, you know, we identified a need to do a little bit of a deeper dive in the condition of the middle school, and would it qualify for renovation status? So we put together an RFP. We advertised that with the town. We received proposals back. We reviewed those proposals, looked at costs, looked at qualifications, and SLAM Collaborative was hired to do this next phase of the project.
That's helpful, thank you.
Good question.
Any other questions? All right, so just real quick, just so everybody understands the roles and responsibilities. You know, the Board of Education, you sort of oversee the project, and you create, help to create and approve the educational specifications, which really defines the building project. So in essence, you have the ed spec, you review it. You ultimately approve it, because it is a document that needs to be submitted with a grant application. And then you give that to the town and say, this is the project we want built. This is our education specification. This is our need. Then the town approves the project funding for it. So the town would vote, whether, different towns, sometimes a referendum process, sometimes an RT, Representative Town Meeting. But the town approves the funding, and then the Board of Selectmen are required to pass three resolutions. They're statutory for the grant application, to file a grant with the state. First one authorizes the Board of Education to apply for the grant. So the Board of Education is the governing body that will fill out the grant application. We normally sit with you hand-in-hand, and we assist you in doing that process. The Board of Selectmen would need to establish a building committee, specific for the project, to oversee the project and oversee the money that the town has appropriated and approved for the project, and then authorize at least the preparation of schematic drawings. So that's sort of the hierarchy of you guys determine what the project needs to be and is, and define it through the ed spec. You tell the town, we need this funded. The town approves funding. The Board of Selectmen then sets up, authorizes you to apply for the grant, sets up the building committee, and then authorizes the beginning of the preparation of drawings. So any questions on sort of the process within the community, as far as hierarchy, your roles? All right. So a little bit about the grant process. Some of you may know this. Some of you are new to the board, so we wanted to just kind of walk you through this. So, you know, assuming you've got a grant application's been completed, you've approved it, you've passed your funding, you want to file a grant application. So the grant application is filed by the Board of Ed, the Superintendent, before June 30th of any given year. Typically, then, once it's accepted by the state, your project will get placed on a priority list, typically in mid-December of that year. So let's just say you filed a grant by 2026, before June 30th of 2026. The paperwork, the package would go into the state. The state would say, yeah, we've accepted this. The state then would, they've accepted the project, put it on their priority list in typically by December 15th of 2026. That would then go into legislative approval. And then the legislative branch in Hartford would vote on the approval of the project in typically end of June, early July of 2027. So you file a grant, and it's typically a year later that the state authorizes the funding for the project.
And Scott, just the, opine, Scott, the priority list, kind of, we're talking about terms. That's a specific list that the Office of Grants Administration has to submit to the Governor statutorily no later than that December 15th date. They have to submit. It's always dated the 15th. That's a list of all the projects that the districts throughout the state submit to them, and it's a comprehensive list that'll ultimately go into what we typically call the education bill that Scott is talking about in June or July the following year.
Now, the state bases their grant commitment on the highest projected student enrollment within eight years after the date you file your grant application. So we did just receive some very new, recent projections. This presentation says 547. The high range, you're right in that, looking at the years, 33, 34, 34, 35. So depending on when you file your grant application, you know, the 547 number that we've used here in this presentation is fairly accurate. But the state will then, and we'll go through that a little bit more as we get into this presentation, but that's the, what the state bases, how much money or what size of a building that they'll reimburse you for, whether it's a renovation or a new project. And they take the student population and they create a space standard calculation. Again, that space standard calculation, we'll show you that momentarily. That determines the size of the building that the state will reimburse. It doesn't mean that you can't build more. You know, let's just say, for example, the state will pay to, you know, reimburse 92,000 square feet, and you want to build 100,000 square feet. You can do that. But what the state will do then is they'll reduce the amount of money that they're giving to the project. They're not going to pay for that extra square footage, and there's a formula for that. So this is just a page. This is, you know, probably a little small on your screen, but this just shows you the space standard calculation. I've got the highest projected enrollment here right now that we used 547. And you insert numbers based on the grade configuration and the number of students in the school. What that does is it calculates for the state standpoint, the maximum they're going to building size that they would reimburse you on, which would maximize your reimbursement. So right now, based on the population of 547, and again, you're right in that neighborhood with the latest projections. The state says, well, to maximize your reimbursement, you can either renovate or build new a building just shy of 93,000 square feet. Now, to put that in context, your current building for your population is 147,753, just shy of 148,000 square feet. So the building that you're currently in, based on what the state says will reimburse you on, is oversized. And this isn't unique just to your middle school, but all four of your buildings in town are oversized solely based on the state space standard calculation. Doesn't mean you're not using all the square footage, or there's unique programs. But just as the state's concerned, your buildings are oversized. So I say at the at the bottom here, and you can see the percentage here, 62.82%, so what the state would do is they're going to reduce your reimbursement rate. You would take your reimbursement rate and multiply it by .6282, and that would be your adjusted reimbursement rate, if in fact, you built new or renovated the full, just shy of 148,000 square feet. So I'll stop there again momentarily, yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to pause there to make sure to see if there's any questions, because this concept can be confusing at first, if you haven't seen it before. Many times, there's the interpretation that the state won't pay for the square footage above the 92,000. What it's actually doing is, as Scott said, they're reducing your reimbursement rate that is applied to the eligible cost for the project. And we like sharing this, because when drafting the ed specs and looking at the different options, it's important to understand what that does to your estimated share that you're going to either pay in the reimbursement you're going to receive, and we want to maximize your reimbursement. So understanding these numbers and how it affects your finances to the projects is really important. This is a major factor in doing that.
Okay, if I could interrupt, and I realize the space standard, I really want to talk more about that. But there was a page before when you talked a little bit about the steps of who's applying and who's approving. Could you, at some point, and I don't mean to take you off track, but at some point, can you talk a little bit more about the timing in terms of applying for a state grant, the town approvals, and then a referendum? You know, like, just how does all that fit together? You know, sometimes we hear, you've got to get the the grant application in before a referendum, and then there seems to be a possibility, well, maybe you can get the grant application in after a referendum. And then, of course, you know, the fine-tuning in terms of where the Board of Selectmen comes in as well. So I don't know if that's, if you're going to go into that later, that's fine, but I just don't want to lose that question.
No, I think that's a great question. Thank you. And no, I think probably now is a good time to address it. So in order to file the grant application, again, let's just use this June 2026 as the target date. You know, the Board would have to have, and I think you already do have, an approved ed spec. So you would just have to, I guess, probably just take a quick look at that again. This Board makes sure that all your needs were addressed. Anytime before you file the grant, the Board of Selectmen would need to pass the three resolutions that are on the screen, setting up a building committee, authorizing the Board to apply for the grant, and the preparation of the schematic drawings. From the town approves the project funding, you know, every town looks at this a little bit differently, depending on if you are a referendum town. The state has allowed the Board, the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, to commit to a referendum prior to you needing to submit the full project, or prior to the project going in to the priority list. So again, let's just say you had everything done, and the Board, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, approved a referendum for November 4th of the fall of 2026. So the state would allow you to file the grant application. You would just file the motion that put that referendum in place, saying, we're committing to a referendum, committing to approving the funding prior to the priority list going into the legislative branch. You would then just need to, assuming the project passed, get the certified election results by November 15th and get that into the state. That's the deadline. So you have to have your funding. If you want to get onto the priority list for that following year, your deadline to get your approved funding would be November 15th of that year. Now, you can also approve funding prior to making a grant application. So let's just say that things are moving a little quick. You need a little bit more time to bring the project forward to the community, educate the public, make sure you've got all your Ts crossed, your Is dotted. You could always have a fall referendum, or even spring referendum, either fall of '26 or spring of '27. And you could have your project funding approved prior to the grant, and then you would file for your grant application And you could have your project funding approved prior to the grant, and then you would file for your grant application by June of twenty twenty-seven. So there's, there's a number of ways you can look at, you know, what the timing of your funding is, which gives you more opportunities potentially to, you know, make sure that you've, you've done your diligence on the project. But it's always, no, it's always June of a given year when you file the grant, and it's always one year from that point where the state is going to commit to funding the project.
Okay, that's, that's going to be really important for us, because, um, you know, as we look at the work that we have left to do. Um, you know, and we'll hear more board members' thoughts. But, um, I am making the assumption that it might be more than reviewing the current educational specifications. You know, so we have sort of a lot of information, a lot of studies, we need to review all those, we may look at different options, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it's very important to us that we understand the, the referendum is like, okay, that's, that's say in November, but a grant could be applied for in either um, ahead of it in like twenty-six, spring of twenty-six, June of twenty-six, or even June of twenty-seven with the same referendum. Cause we are a referendum town.
Yep.
Okay, I don't mean to hog the time, um, but I just think it's important that all of us, um, just keep, keep those options in mind, I think that's really helpful, and it was something new to me, so thank you.
Can I just, just one quick clarification on that, Scott? So if we can't make the June twenty twenty-six deadline, we could still have a referendum in November? And from that referendum hit the June twenty twenty-seven?
That, that is correct.
Great.
Yeah, and, and I just think November, you know, typically people have, you know, referendum, they don't want to have a special election, so depending on the town, if they didn't want to have a special election, typically it's on Election Day in November, uh, but you could certainly have your funding anytime prior to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. You know, if you, if you even slid past November of twenty-six. Again, we're just recognizing the fact that most communities, uh, in most cases like to have a, a single election.
Yeah, what's important to understand here is that the project starts in earnest and is eligible for reimbursement upon funding authorization. It's not upon when you submit your grant application, but when the grant commitment is provided that year later, and that's really important to say, we had one, uh, district years ago, they're waiting, they had funding authorized, they submitted the grant, and they're waiting until the grant commitment that, that June-July timeframe. They were losing time on the project, they were losing escalation costs. So it's really important to understand that as soon as you pass funding, you can start, um, procuring design services and professional services to get the project going. The only difference is when you can submit reimbursement requests to the state of Connecticut, you can't do that until you have the commitment. So it's, well, when, when, when we get deeper into this, we'll put together a timeline to, to, to graphically show those different scenarios for you, so you can see it kind of graphically, uh, but I want to make sure you, you know that it's when it's the fundings authorized is when it's eligible for reimbursement for the state of Connecticut.
Yeah, and, and so the, so the, the good news there is assuming a November referendum, either a grant in twenty twenty-six or a grant in twenty twenty-seven, we would always recommend as soon as your funding is approved, and let's again use that November date, that again, it's, it's Chuck laid out, we would, um, put an RFP out, hire the architect, start the design services immediately. Because let's just say it's, I mean, and I'm going to pick a number, this isn't a number if it's, it's, it's actual, but let's just say for, for ease, a hundred million dollar project. And we're looking right now at year-over-year escalations of about four and a half percent, the construction costs are increasing. So to lose a year, you're looking at losing four and a half million dollars. Now you can start designing the, as soon as your, as soon as your funding is approved, and we can start the design process. And whether we put the grant in in twenty-six or twenty-seven, all that really affects is when this, when the town can go back to the state and say, hey, reimburse us now for those design fees. If you put the grant in in twenty-seven, it's going to take, you're going to have to carry those design fees a little longer. But looking at, at a project of this size, typically it's eighteen months to, to design it on average. So whether you file your grant in twenty-six or twenty-seven, as long as you pass your referendum in November, in either scenario and start a design, your opening day to the school wouldn't change. The only thing that changes is when you can go to the state and say, start reimbursing us for some of the money that we've already spent starting at that funding approval in November. And I, and I think that's probably as deep as we want to get into it now, but we can start again, looking at different scenarios and showing you different macro schedules of how all this lays out in the future. But I think for, for this evening, we've probably thrown enough at you as far as that subject goes. So any, any further questions there? So this is just a, a copy right now, and I've, I've highlighted Weston of the state reimbursement right now. Um, these are the twenty-six numbers, they reevaluate it every year and change it every year. Um, but right now, and it's, and it's based on wealth of the community. Uh, right now, your new construction rate is twelve point five percent. So that is the maximum that the state would reimburse you is twelve point five percent of that, of a project uh, for the eligible work, and again, we'll talk about that in, in, in momentarily. And if it was a renovation project, the state, um, would reimburse you at twenty-two point one four percent. And again, that would be the maximum, uh, you can see the numbers down here at the bottom of the page, um, the maximum reimbursement for eligible work. So going back to the space standard, if right now the space standard for five hundred and forty-seven students says you can either build or renovate a project just shy of ninety-three thousand square feet, if you ended up with a project, its completion, it was ninety-three thousand square feet, instead of this being reduced sixty-two point eight two percent, this would be a hundred percent. So you'd get the full twelve point five percent, twenty-two point one four percent of the eligible work. But again, in, in the case, the example that we did right now, because the building's oversized, you would take these two numbers and multiply them by point six eight. And that would be your resulting reimbursement rate on the eligible work. You know, I'll stop there for a moment. Any questions?
Is another potentially obvious and basic question, but is there any chance that the grant does not get approved in the amount that you're showing us?
You, you, as far as the reimbursement rate or, or, or a particular grant, once
Buy for the grant, and is does no, or not?
Yeah, once the project has been ac- accepted, the grant's been submitted and they've accepted it, and they've placed it in a priority list. Um, I've only seen one year, I think when we had a, I think it was two thousand eight. Uh, I think it was that recession where the state put off funding the projects until the fall. Um, so instead of June, July, that vote didn't happen, I think until September or October. Um, but I have personally not seen the state, especially if it's a priority project placed on the list, uh, priority A, I have not seen the state, um, fail to fund a project. Now, I can't say that that couldn't happen, but you can certainly get a good read, read on that from your local legislators. Um, talk to them, get a sense of, of, um, you know, commitment where the, where the, you know, where Hartford stands. Um, but I think once you're on the priority list, it's, it's a pretty strong, um, you know, assumption that you're going to be fine.
Scott, just wrote another quick question on that, can grants be stacked? Are there other potential grants that we might be eligible for? So they can be stacked?
Um, in, in the past, the state used to take back if you, you got some other grants for other areas. I think they've kind of rescinded that, um, you know, whether it was a grant for energy efficiency through ever-source. Um, you know, specific to that standpoint, that the state isn't taking back their percentage on that further. Um, but as far as a major funding grant, um, you know, I'm not sure what that avenue might be.
Yeah, I know, in a case like for, there is like the IRA, that I think is IRA tax credits. Um, I know a couple of districts are looking at those, and the language is kind of flip-flopped, I would certainly want to reference and go back to the latest legislation on that, because it depends on when the grant application was filed. So, um, there are cases where they, they allow you to keep that money, and you can kind of, I'll say double-dip it for lack of a better term. Um, but prior years, that, yeah, they would reduce it from that, they would ask you what your other funding sources besides uh, bonding the project or however you finance it for that. So that's something we, we definitely want to, again, revisit that, it kind of changes quite often, and we want to make sure we're, you know, on top of that.
So, um, you, you've probably heard me say a few times now of, you know, what is the eligible work? Um, so the state doesn't pay their percentage of ineligible construction. So what is eligible and what is not eligible? So the, the simplest one is anything over your property line, if you were tying in to utilities, if you had to run a gas service, an extra quarter of a mile down to your project. Um, anything that came, that was over the property line to make any connections, opening up the road, those types of things, the state doesn't pay for. Even though it's required for your project, the state says if it's over the property line, we take that right off the top. Um, and we've already touched base on, on the second bullet here, the square footage over the space standard. Um, so there, the space standard calculation, as we showed, could, can reduce, depending on the final size of the building, um, your reimbursement rate, and that again is applied to the eligible construction. There are avenues for requesting space waivers, if you have unique programs in the facility. Um, sometimes if you're renovating an older building, it has, um, you know, very large corridors or very efficient, inefficient layout. There are some avenues that you can explore to try and mitigate some of those, uh, to gain back that extra square footage, but that's really a, a case-by-case basis that's evaluated. Um, and, and each separate project by the state of Connecticut. The sheet that we just looked at, this previous slide, um, again, showed you the state reimbursement, what your rates are for the fall, you know, started posted for twenty twenty-six, again, those get reevaluated every year. Um, typically, they don't change by a lot. Uh, we have seen a new methodology by the state that was just enacted. Used to be that the reimbursement and the new rate were always ten percentage points different. Now they're, you're, they're a little closer, um, you know, I would have loved to seen yours a little closer than they, they currently are, a little higher on the new construction. Um, but again, typically those change year over year. The, the, the next bullet talks about, um, repair and replacement, those nasty, what we say, the R words. Um, the state, if you don't get renovation status, and we'll talk about that momentarily. Um, the state doesn't pay in most cases for a repair replacement. So let's say all your doors were in terrible condition, or all your plumbing fixtures were, were just shot, your toilet partitions. And you wanted to do that as part of a capital project, the state's not going to reimburse for that. Um, the capital projects the state will reimburse are things such as HVAC indoor air quality now, they've just started supporting indoor air quality, which is, which is wonderful. Um, new roofs, the state will support to put a new roof on the building. Um, they will not, uh, you know, support windows and interior finishes, and so anything else if, within a project, if it's a repair or replacement of an existing system, the state will not pay for that. Now, there is an avenue to get the state to pay for all that, if you, if you're going to renovate the building and it's, um, getting renovation status. Um, renovation status isn't automatic, uh, you need to put together documentations, and again, the first phase of that uh, was recently completed by SLAM. Um, you have to put in an application, and the application is evaluated once your grant goes in. Um, so unfortunately, and we've had this argument with the state, this, the state won't meet with you, they won't tell you they're going to grant you renovation status before the grant goes in. You have to tell them, this is the project we want, here's the project we're filing it, and we're also filing it in requesting renovation status. But what renovation status does, and there's, there's criteria to achieve that goal, is it, it takes everything that's a repair or replacement and makes it eligible. But it also requires you to update the entire facility. So here's the statute here, um, section ten to eighty-two. It's a school building project that totally refurbished as an existing building, it results in a like-new facility. Now here's one of the keys. It has to cost less than building a new facility. So that's one of the key criteria here. So if you wanted to pursue a renovation and, and not build new, and you wanted to completely renovate the building, in order for the state to provide that extra percentage in, in, in cover all those repair and replacement items, you'd need to put together the package for renovation status and get that approved by the state. Um, you know, the, the criteria here, you absolutely apply for you, you'll, once it's renovated, uh, you'll have to, the architect and the team would certify that everything's going to last uh, for a period of twenty years, and seventy-five percent of the facility has to be, um, at least thirty years old, which your building is. Um, some of the additional criteria, and again, here's the key, uh, that the design team now slam, when we hired them, we did not have this information in the previous Silver Petricelli, previous Tecton studies. They talked about renovation status, but they never really looked at the building and said, would the building qualify for renovation status? Um, so again, we put the RFP out, we hired Jim and Day, in, um, in Kemp um, to come in, and they performed the, the first part of it, and they've provided a letter, uh, to us, and I, I believe, you know, the board should have it, that, um, the building from a structural standpoint is sound, and the building is appropriate for renovation. And again, um, you know, the next step, um, which would be part B is doing a much deeper dive into that, looking at the systems, looking at what it would cost to renovate the building, potentially right sizing the building, and then working with colliers to determine if the cost to renovate is less than constructing new. If the answer to that is no, you won't be able to achieve renovation status. So it would either that, then your choice point would be, we can do some capital improvement projects, in the majority of which we won't get reimbursed for, or build a new building. And I'm going to stop there for a minute, because I'm sure you, you probably have a few questions.
I don't want to, well, I'll be the first one then. How does this renovate as new relate to the, um, space standard? For instance, you've pointed out that our building is oversized for reimbursement under a new construction. So how does the being oversized affect renovation status? I'm not, I'm not clear.
It's the, it's the same criteria, the, the space standard and the space that the, um, the state will reimburse you on doesn't change. Um, you know, the only thing you can do is you could, you could, again, you could apply for a space standard waiver. And if you had you very unique programs, um, you know, within the building, you can say, we need this additional square footage because of X, Y, and Z, and justify it in a letter, point out the space, point out the unique programs that are unique to your community. Um, you know, for example, we've worked in some underserved communities that had thirty to forty percent is ESL, English is second language. So, you know, normally you might see one classroom for ESL services. Um, in this case, they had, they had a few classrooms supporting the ESL program. So that was a unique program feature, we sent, went to the state, we said, look at our demographics, this is an underserved community, we have a lot of non-English speaking people here. Um, and they granted a space waiver for that additional square footage. But from a, a renovation standpoint or a new standpoint, the reimbursement percentage, they're always just going to look at the, the space standard and the square footage.
Okay, um, what's your experience been with, um, uh, achieving renovate as new uh, stand, or status, um, in terms of the districts you've worked with or experience you've heard about? Is this impossible to get? Is it like, it's not that hard?
We, 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 we achieved it at Region fourteen, we're finishing up Wyndham High School, which we renovate as new. I've got two projects right now underway in Hartford that are renovated as new status. But, you know, that's the reason you hire the design team. Um, you know, to do that, that work upfront and, and to say, yes, we can meet this. You know, we've, the building is sound, the building is appropriate to be renovated as new, and the cost to renovate would be cheaper than building new. Again, if, if, if you can't hit that criteria, the state, you know, you don't submit a renovation status application, because the state's just going to, going to, going to say you don't qualify. I actually had a, a project in Hartford. Um, we weren't unfortunately involved in the, in the upfront and the pre-con, um, work. They filed a grant, assuming they were going to get renovation status. And, but they wanted to hire the architect, you know, we worked with them to hire the architect after the, the grant went in. And unfortunately, this one project didn't qualify, we had to change to a new construction, it delayed the project by a significant amount of time. So again, that's one of the reasons we've got SLAM with us, um, because that's a very key component in you understanding and choosing your approach. Um, you know, because, you know, certainly your, your reimbursement rates aren't as high as some other communities. Um, but, you know, every dollar is precious, and you want to make sure that you're making decisions both educationally, what's the best education? what's the best educationally for the students in the community and the long-term investment, but also financially. And you need that, that information.
When you're, when, uh, when you're talking about renovations, sometimes you don't know. I mean, my impression is that building a new building, you're kind of more certain of, you know, there are fewer surprises. When you go in and get into a renovation situation, how can you possibly predict the surprises? And then you could end up being, you know, not, you know, in other words, if you have to build in so many contingencies, how does that fit into applications? When you have great unknown things?
Yeah, that is part of, of the budget evaluation. Certainly, you know, for renovation status versus a brand new construction, we are absolutely, we're going to carry more contingencies for those construction unknowns. And that's going to drive the price of a renovation project up further. You know, certainly again, if you're renovating versus building new, you don't have really any place to put these kids. So you're going to be renovating an occupied building. That process is, is probably going to take a year to a year and a half longer minimum than just building a brand new facility and moving into it. So all of those costs, the escalations, the general conditions, the time of construction, when we look at total project cost and we submit that to the state, we have to take all of that into account. And if a renovation project, taking all of those factors into account, isn't less expensive than building new and, and the architect has to sign on the document that says, here's the estimates and renovation is cheaper than new. If we can't get that, you know, then, then you've, you've got to just be, go pursue the new construction.
Well, and conversely, there's a statute that if we can prove that constructing new is less than renovation, you can request and apply for the additional percentage points for that, a general, that, that higher reimbursement. We did that in the town of Madison, received 10 additional points for drafting a letter demonstrating that building their new elementary school would be, it was almost equal. Those bills barely lower, but they still provide that, that resulted in probably about $5.8 million of reimbursement to that district because of that.
Okay. I think you just confused me. Can you say that again?
Yeah. So we're, we're, we're saying here in a renovation status that we have to, in order to obtain that status, you have to prove that renovating is less than building new. There's a statute that states that if you were elected to build new, a new building and demonstrate with, you know, sound judgment and numbers and budgets, that building new is less than renovating the building. It hasn't been done a lot. If you can prove that and they agree with it, they can have the option of granting you the higher reimbursement rate. In this case, 22.14% for proving that and they'll give you that higher amount because they, they wanted to, they want to renovate buildings. But if we can prove it's cheaper to go new, the statute says they can give you the additional percentage points towards a new building.
Okay. And then when you say renovate as new, does that mean that you just keep the same foundation? What exactly does renovate as new mean?
Yeah, you would keep the same foundation. You could remove portions of the building, build new wings, as long as you maintain more than 50% of the existing building when you're done with the project. But it's all new electrical, all new plumbing, all new mechanical systems, finishes, ceilings, lighting, you name it, it's, it's outside of the bones of the building. Everything is brand new and it also doesn't mean you can't knock down walls, reconfigure program spaces. You know, typically, you know, we're not, if, if it's existing walls and you're working in an existing box, let's say your gymnasium. And, and again, part of this renovation process is, is the design team saying the building is structurally sound. Well, we're not going to touch those foundations and those exterior walls. But we may take out all the bleachers and the sports floor and put in all new mechanicals, lighting, finishes, flooring, new bleachers in that gymnasium.
Okay. And I just, I just, okay, this is helpful and I'll probably come back for repetition because Chuck's point of you reach a point where, wait, you know, it's, it's just as, it's cheaper to build new. I mean, it's just like confusing, but anything to help us be eligible if it comes to it for more reimbursement is exactly the route we need to take. And it seems like from last spring, the, the differential between renovating as new and building as new wasn't that great. So we may be in that unique situation of being able to prove that, you know, to Chuck's point. So anyway, I'm sorry, continue.
So next steps, we're, we're almost to the end and then we can certainly open it back up for some further discussions. So, you know, as I stated, currently SLAM has completed that phase one of the renovation evaluation. So they've confirmed to us structurally, the building's not going to fall down. We can renovate the building, it's going to last. It's, it's, there's, there's still a sound foundation there to the building. The second part of that is for them to really look at the systems and all the other components of the building. How much work is that going to need? Can the building really be reconfigured and optimized to meet your educational specification? And then work with us on that cost estimate so we can evaluate the cost of renovating or building new. So that's really kind of a critical next step. Right now, you know, they, they've only completed phase one, so they need that authorization to do that next step. Again, we, you know, we understand that the board has, you know, approved the four school, keeping with the four school district. Certainly I think, you know, maybe looking at our, our summary of this previous studies and just confirming once again that the grade configuration is the best educational model for the district. We did just receive the, the updated population study. So actually on this one, I could, I can check the box there. It was, I think it came in on November 17th. You know, once we, we know, you know, we've got clear direction from you on what the project is. You know, six through eight middle school, we're going to be working with SLAM. We'll start putting together schedules and budgets for either scenario, renovation or new. You know, certainly we're not going to take renovation very far if SLAM comes back and says, you know, hey, guys, there's, there's just no way we're going to meet it. There's no way we can, we can do this. Then we'll, 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 you know, meet with you and start looking at those. But we'll start developing schedules like we've talked about now with some of those different options of when we file the grant, when we file for, or when we have a town referendum. And then we'll work with the town and you to develop that referendum timeline and coordinate the grant applications, you know, potentially either in 2026 or 2027. And then really the final slide, which is really kind of the goal. You know, really you're, you're, you're looking to provide a, you know, 21st century school, create a building that meets the ed spec, address some of your long and short-term deficiencies, mechanicals, electrical plumbing, reduce maintenance costs, code related issues. And, you know, the last one's really, really, I think, important here as well as, is, you know, maximize natural light and sustainability. There's a lot of, of interior windowless rooms in that building, which makes it really challenging. It's, it's not a great environment for learning. You know, natural light really is, is a very positive factor on learning in educational facilities. So I think again, it may come down to if the costs are close. And again, this is something that we'll need to provide you with the data and the tools to help evaluate. But, you know, could you renovate the school? And, and let's just say the answer is yes, but the costs are so close. Then, then it's a matter of should we? You know, educationally, can the existing facility meet the ed spec and provide, you know, a, a suitable learning environment on, on par with what a new facility might be able to offer? So again, those are, are some of the tools and the information that we're going to be giving to you to help you make that, that final evaluation and then recommendation to the community. And with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
God, I have a question about reimbursement. Being that the middle school is currently oversized and if we were to entertain grade reconfiguration, how do the two things work together? In other words, if the middle school is properly sized, or sorry, the middle school is oversized for the six, seven, eight. But if there was spare capacity, which by, I guess reimbursement rates, there is the, the, and, and the school got reconfigured. And let's just say hypothetically, another grade was added to it, or two grades were added to it as part of this project, how does that affect reimbursement?
Well, the, so right now we're, we're doing your space standard calculation just based on your three grades, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So we would add in the, the, the fifth grade, which is another 152 students or, or square foot per student. So if you can just be, give me one moment here, just because this is a PowerPoint, so it's not a live document. Let me get to my calculator. So that would change your multiplier from from 160, 68, you'd be at 164 square feet per student. But now your student population is going to go up because your 547 is based on six, seven, eight. So I'm just going to divide that by three right now. Again, this isn't, this isn't super accurate and now I'm going to multiply it by four because you have four grade levels. So it'd be roughly 730 children, students. So 730 times 164, it would bring you up to just shy of 120,000 square feet.
Okay, so.
So you'd still be oversized, but by adding more students into the building, it increases the amount of square footage that the state is going to reimburse you on.
Okay. And I think that was a basis of my question was if the population of the school increased, there was a grade reconfiguration. If we only did five, six, seven, eight and a renovate as new and we took the school down to 92,000 square feet. But there was a desire to at least look at adding additional grades into that building. That should all be determined as part of the design. Because it sounds like what you're saying is if you added more grades to that building, the, the reimbursement would, the, 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 the building is not, we're not pigeonholed into a six, seven, eight configuration as part of the renovate or build new. There is the ability to reconfigure the grades in that school and potentially we'd have, we'd have higher square footage. And by adding more grades into that building, the state wouldn't say, we're only going to reimburse you based on your highest projected enrollment for six, seven, eight.
No, as long as you, you would, you'd have to modify your educational specification for a five through eight school. And, and again, you know, I, I don't know educationally if that makes sense for your community and the way you're set up right now, but that certainly is, is a board decision. Then the building could be right sized. So again, just because you're doing renovation status or you want to renovate the existing building, doesn't mean you have to renovate all 147,000 square feet. You could build a brand new wing adjacent to the building and then tear down the majority of the academic wing. And, you know, let's, let's just say get it to 93 or 95,000 square feet in the end. As long as you maintain at least 50% of the existing building, you still qualify under renovation status. So you can right size the building. You don't have to renovate the full 147, 753. And that would have a positive effect on this, this potential grant reduction. Again, if, if you're, you're allowable in current, and when I say current, this is your current facility, but this is the, this is the size of the building at the completion of the project. And if, again, if it was that 92, 815 be 100% and you'd be, you know, either at 22.14 or 12. But again, depending on our previous discussions, if we can prove that it's cheaper to build new than renovate, then you'd, you'd get that number.
Right. But the, the basis of my question wasn't, it was, it was, I think, I think you answered it just to make sure I understand. If there was a decision to look at adding a grade to that building or two grades or, or, or nothing, whatever the case may be, if there was a decision made or design requested that more grades were added to that building, we would, and the square footage needed for those four grades, those five grades, whatever it is, was 110,000 or 120,000 square feet. All 110, 120,000 square feet would be eligible for the reimbursement.
Okay. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah. They're always going to make whatever, whatever class configuration and number of students you have that support that class configuration. So again, I, I just took the 547 divided by three and then multiplied it by four because now you have a four grade school. You know, and it was just over 700, 700 students, 730. So the state would reimburse you on a, on a school for 730 students times their space calculation, which in this case with them would be 164 instead of 168. And the reason it goes down slightly is they give you 176 square feet for eighth grade, 176 square feet for seventh, based on the school size, then 152 for sixth. And if you go up into the chart, here's fifth grade, 152. So that the state assumes seventh and eighth grade have specialty spaces like science labs and some other spaces that are larger. So they give you a little more square footage as the grade levels progress. So you're adding it, you're adding more, you're adding potential for more square footage. You're bringing your student population up to 730, but your multiplier goes from 168 and reduces slightly down to 164.
Okay. And David, I don't mean to cut you off, but I am looking at the time and I am sorry for, I was a time eater more than you. But I do want to allow time for the Board of Ed members to try to give us your thinking about the, the timeline that we're potentially looking at in terms of a referendum in November. And then, you know, then we could fine tune that later and as to when a grant application went in. And also you're thinking about what issues or what topics that you would like to include in our study. And I think David's point about what about, you know, this grade going, you know, perhaps into, you know, a different grade configuration, I guess is what I'm saying. So if that's one of your issues as well, like, let, go ahead and let's put everything on the table that you think we ought to be looking at. It's been a while since these studies have been done, but we're all living in Weston. We've all heard from our neighbors, from various, you know, people who have been in town for a long time, people have been, who've not been in town for long at all, parents, people who don't have parents or don't have kids in the schools. So kind of give us your thoughts and what issues you would like to grapple with. You heard, and thank you very much, Colliers tonight in that, you know, kind of focusing on the middle school, but don't feel hemmed in. I would just sort of advise that, like, start with what you really want to look at, what questions you really want to investigate and, you know, we'll take it from there. So I don't know who wants to start first. Lisa, do you have your hand up for that?
I do. So therefore there's, they, they've put a lot of interesting things on the table. Scott Pelman spoke about not only is the middle school oversized, but so are many of our other buildings. And so David brought up grade configuration. And I think we need to look at all the buildings, the amount of space that they have and what grade configuration looks like. We talk about the building being 147,000 square feet, but we're only allowed 93,000 square feet. And I know David was talking about putting more grades in the middle school. But, you know, the cost is a real factor in what we're looking at. Can another grade go, let's say into whis? So now it's not six, seven, and eight, maybe it's seven and eight. And so we're going to need a smaller building instead of a larger building. And I think we need to look at those different configurations and the size of the buildings as, as all of this information has been brought to light.
Yeah, I would encourage you to, to go back and to visit the, the last Tecton study as well as the summary that Collier's put together that I just updated on 11/26/2025, the Weston Public Schools Summary of Information and Path Forward. So that gives you kind of a high level discussion of building sizes, current building sizes, that they're over square footage, but Tecton, the Tecton study was the one that started looking at different grade configurations and options. So I think that would be a good starting point for this, this committee.
Thanks a lot, Scott.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. Who would like to go next? You know, I'm going to call on, on you, Peter, right? Peter, would you be willing to weigh in?
Oh, certainly. This is a great summary. It's deja vu all over again, but greatly appreciated. I do have actually an out-of-the-box topic for discussion in the future, and this is for Colliers, but, uh, because it's a, it's a different perspective. Have you guys ever been the project managers on building a new magnet school?
Yeah, um, not a new one. Um, and I think there's different types. Um, I think SLAM has two, but, uh, um, New London, City New London, they're actually a magnet district. Um, we did an alteration project to their middle school because their majority of their building was less than thirty years old, but it was nineteen ninety-four. Uh, but that was an alteration, extension-type project, and with a lot of analogy, because Scott was alluding to, um, for it. Um, but with the magnet schools, and I welcome Kemp and Jim and Scott's opinion on it, so. I think, um, my understanding is the state is going to be looking at those type of applications, uh, probably more stringently. Um, due to the, I think, my understanding, the intent of the magnet is to provide offerings of your, you know, adjacent other, you know, other districts. Um, uh, and different offerings for those. So I, I, I think that, um, I think Kemp, did you guys, you guys didn't work in the Greenwich one, did you?
We've done, we've, uh, designed several magnet schools for various districts, but, um, I, I agree with you, Chuck, that the state's going to look at them much more critically. Um, not even sure, they may still have a moratorium on magnet schools, but I'm not positive on that.
Yeah, because I think a lot of districts years ago, um, I'm not going to name the district, um, I came from it, but, uh, they put in a district magnet school, now whether or not it achieved those results that the goal of a magnet school is. But there's obviously an eighty percent reimbursement rate associated with the magnet school, and that, that was the, the, uh, attraction to, uh, designating, uh, schools, magnet schools. Um, and I think after a while, the state started looking at those and analyzing the, um, the results of that. And, and did it perform as, as it was intended? And I think they might have been, might have been finding that they may not have been, and that it was really for the eighty percent reimbursement. So we had to talk, that's something I think we'd want to talk to OGA about, uh, in the state and go where, what's their position on that.
Right, the current twenty twenty-four statute promotes building new magnet schools for, uh, I forget the term, the regional that doesn't have such a magnet school, and our region doesn't. Lynchfield's region doesn't, but like Larn does, which is Groton, New London, they have a rebiology.
Yeah, so we're doing, we're doing Larn's Early Childhood Center right now. We're actually out the bid for that one in Waterford. Um, and they're regional, they make, you know, they provide offerings to other school districts that may be short on early childhood.
That's the interdist- inter-district approach, right? And you're getting eighty percent reimbursement on a bill, on a new bill. Eighty percent is, my math's right, about six X more than twelve percent, so we're doing pretty good there. Uh, and it really comes down to, is it unserviced in the, in the dirt, right? So it's Wilton or Ridgefield. Uh, and even Norwalk or Danbury outside of our dirt, if it, if it did not have the curriculum, uh, trajectory. And it turns out in the twenty twenty-four statute, if you're doing IT, AI, robotics, that's their thing, and we don't have that within fifty miles of Weston's. Four acres of our middle school. So it's kind of an interest, that's why I asked, it's an interesting, uh, approach to get your, not your ninety-two thousand square feet, because guess what? You build a magnet school, and if you have five hundred forty-seven students projected of your own district, you gotta put in a hundred thirty-five more students from outside. So now you're at six seventy, seven hundred, you get to build a mil- a bigger school, and you get a bigger chunk of money back.
Hey, got it, those additional students is where maybe some of the challenges might have been coming of, are they really achieving, getting the, those additional students into the magnet schools, my guess.
Yeah, that, that's where the challenge is. You know, we, we've seen districts where they, they struggle to get that twenty-five percent out of district, and then it hurts the in-district students because they need to keep the ratios in order to continue to get the reimbursement from the state.
Yeah, and it is, it is a different approach, because it is curriculum-driven, and you have to set the curriculum and then step forward from there and hope that you can back into the student enrollment and the population and the budget and the dollars. So, you know, because they're, they're clearly connected.
You got it. It's curriculum-based, so that's the hot curriculum. New York Times article said that many college majors are now centered around AI and robotics. So we're ahead of the curve still with our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. The key is the hundred twenty-five, a hundred fifty extra kids, and are they possible? So when you have towns like Wilton, Ridgefield, and Orwalk building condos, and every square foot, they have the kids, right? Because they're fifteen minutes away. So the bet's a pretty good bet that you're going to find a hundred twenty-five interested kids.
Yeah, and that, that's also, yeah, it's also a little farther-reaching analysis too. So if you're going to assume some numbers and assume numbers that you're bringing in from outside towns, I think you also have to look at the enrollment or the, uh, the grade configuration as well. And then you look at Weston students and see how you can shift Weston students around. So from going, you know, from a six, seven, eight to a five, six, seven, eight is going to bump up the Weston enrollment projections for that school. If you're bringing in outside students as well, you may be able to build that bigger school. But then you also have to analyze what happened to the elementary schools, if you pull fifth graders out of the Weston schools. So, you know, and then, then you're into a game where you're starting to look at possible consolidation of the elementary schools, and that may, may not be what the town wants at this point, so.
I was looking for curriculum in eighty percent. I was pretty happy with those two. I'll, I'll make that a starting point. And it looks like it's plausible because of the statutes, so.
All right, um, okay.
A topic of discussion?
Yes.
That's on my list.
All right, we're not going to solve that tonight, but it's, it's creative and it's interesting. Um, all right, who, uh, Michael, do you mind, uh, sort of, uh, giving us where you're coming from?
Uh, sure. So, uh, uh, look, I've been through the process now a couple times over the last couple of years. Um, very mindful that we need to get something done. I want to get something done, you know, as quickly as possible, but um, I also know that the decision here has a potential financial impact to the town that could span, you know, twenty-plus years. And so I think, and Deb, you and I have sort of talked about this, um, offline as well. In that, look, I, I think it's no surprise that in the past, in, in, in past meetings, I think m- my biggest issue here has been sort of moving forward deliberately with the timeline that we can put together, Deb. And, and I know you're, you're on top of this, so I, I appreciate you, um, holding this meeting. But timeline, key information that we need, milestones, meetings that will be needed. Um, my, a lot of my questions, Deb, frankly, uh, y- you guys have covered some of the other ones that I've had. A lot of my questions frankly are around financing and affordability, right? What's the amount that we could afford? What's the timeframe of that bonding? What's the timing of the deployment? Um, what does that mean in terms of, you know, cushion or additional funding for the maintenance and upkeep for the other schools over that time period? Because I don't want, of course, them to go, um, you know, um, to be served sort of at a, at a suboptimal funding rate. Um, impacts to the, a lot, some of this I'm getting into, into Board of Finance too, but impacts to the bond rating, tax implications. Um, I think all of that is, is vitally important. I think that last year, if I remember correctly, and Scott, I think that when you guys were here last year, we were talking about sort of phase two for this renovate as new. And I think we are having to say, I, I don't think we took a, we actually took a vote on that, whether or not to move forward, but we were discussing at the time whether or not it even made sense to move forward with that based on the cost, um, of the projects. And so I think we need to circle back and really decide again, you know, this board, whether or not, um, you know, we should be moving forward with, with, uh, with stage two on that. Um, also, Deb, just again riffing here a little bit, um, you know, just thinking about, you know, where the Board of Finance again is at. And then I, I'd also, and this is a so, sort of a little off-topic, maybe we could discuss this, uh, another time, but there were clearly, I think, concerns from the first select woman, um, about the project. And I think the last time this board passed this, Deb, we, we, um, we, we voted to move forward with the plans. I, I, I was a, I was a no for that just because of lack, I, I just felt like we were going way too fast. Um, even though I do want to get this done. And I think that there are considerations maybe that the first select woman has, or, you know, other members of the Board of, of, of Selectmen may have that play into this, and I think we need, we need input from Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen, sort of as we move forward too. So that's just, you know, my, y- you guys have covered a lot. My area of focus is just on the finance. I want to make sure that, you know, everyone is eyes wide open on what this is going to cost and what it means for the district over the, over the funding period. And what it means for the town in terms of both, um, you know, the students and what we're going to build, we're able to build, and then doing it in a prudent way for the taxpayers. So I think that's, that's where Matt is at.
Okay, well, that's a lot, and some, um, you know, good thoughts about the involvement on, of the Board of Selectmen and/or the Board of, um, Finance. Um, you know, some of that is, you know, going to be their job. Uh, but we absolutely, you know, need to partner and, and look at the situation and try to balance all the, all the different needs. Um, Nicole.
Um, I, I agree with, I don't know if I have anything new to say. I agree with what both Lisa and Mike said. I, it seems that our school buildings are large, so I would be interested in seeing all of the school facilities and the spaces that exist in all of the facilities to see if they could be more efficiently utilized. Um, and I appreciate, this presentation is really helpful. As somebody who's new to the board, it was really great and helpful context, and it's extremely clear. But I also would like to explore the other options a- and just have a better understanding of what the options are other than just focusing on the middle school. Because in all of the preliminary reports, there were, there are issues in the other buildings. So I just, it might not be affordable, but maybe think creatively about where students can be placed, in which buildings, and, and, and just think a little bit more holistically beyond just looking at the next steps for the middle school. I would say something that is really helpful, and it's really, I like, it's very clear what, what our next steps are, what your next steps are. I think for us to decide what are we targeting as our timeline in terms of, are we all agreeing to shoot for a November referendum? I think it would be helpful to work backwards from there with what is the timing by, you know, to do all of the things that we need to do to be ready for that.
To, Deb, I think either way, to Nicole's point, I think either way, we're, we're shooting for a November referendum, right? I think the question is whether or not we, whether or not the time, the time is going to allow us to, um, accelerate the process here and, and get in for a grant for June twenty twenty-six or put in for the grant in June twenty twenty-seven. Um, I, I think if I understand that correctly, right, I think we're, we are targeting, right, a November referendum either way. Is that correct?
Um, it sounded to me like, yes, I mean, e- and that's, that's aggressive. Um, it's been called, I mean, I'm called, I've been liking to call it ambitious, but somebody just said, oh, it's aggressive. So, yeah, so I'm kind of saying, you know, what I would like to do, but it, you know, I want to hear the rest of the board too, is shoot for a referendum in November on the best proposal that we can put forward with our thinking of what's good for kids and what's financially the best we can do. Um, and then the grant would come, you know, maybe before it, if it, you know, if all things fell into place. Um, and, you know, or afterwards, which I was glad to find out tonight is a possibility.
Um, Deb, I just want to add on to what, uh, Michael was saying.
Sure.
Uh, at the end of, of last year, we were talking about build as new or renovate as new or build new, and, you know, what came out of that was that there were some, so many unknowns in renovate as new that it might be more costly. And I think that we should get the data on the table, and that would be a quick vote. And that would, uh, move us further ahead very quickly.
Okay, um, and I guess my question would be, uh, do we need the phase-two information, no matter what we do? Or only if we pursue the renovate as new path? Can someone from, um, Colliers or SLAM answer that?
Yep, I'll, I'll take a Deb, uh, stab at Deb and, and, you know, Kemper, one of them on some point. Um, and it's a value question of, you know, the cost of the work, obviously. Um, I think, you know, again, the, the initial phase one is, is really going to fill, can we even do it? And SLAM, who's done many renovation projects, you typically go through a building, go, yeah, we can renovate it or not, have a good idea. We've already kind of done that first step, but then going in deeper, if it reveals that you can't, you know, that we, you know, if we, we really can't achieve a renovation status without doing it legislatively. Um, because you can do it legislatively if you want to, many districts have. Um, is it worth doing and does it kind of maybe, we, we call it the path not traveled. We check that box, we look, and we said, listen, we've exhausted it. Based upon our study, it just, the information doesn't support it. And can you stand on thick, thick ice um, in saying that to your constituents and your stakeholders and your taxpayers, that we did really look at it in earnest? And gave it, um, a really, uh, deep look at it, and it really doesn't support it. Versus, okay, we just dismissed it, we decided to just go new, because going new, I can see where some folks, well, you just, we just want the new building because it is new, right? That there's, I think that's kind of obvious where some folks might select that. But I think doing the study, um, i- it gives in, or if you can do it, then, you know, you can do it as well. But if you don't do it, y- you said you've really done the deep dive into that. That's the, maybe the avenue, maybe a perspective I might consider.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Chuck. I think you need to do the due diligence to know the result of the study. Because if you, if you don't, you're going to have, uh, constituents saying, well, you didn't look at all the options. And, you know, it's just, it's a study that I think needs to be done so you can rule it out, or, or it may turn out that it, uh, is the right approach. It, it needs to be looked at in detail. And it needs to be based on your ed spec, as Scott has been saying. So if you are thinking about changing grade configurations, that needs to be considered first, so that when we do the conceptual design work as part of the renovate-to-new study, we know what classrooms and what spaces need to go into this, into the building, so we, we know the size and so forth. Um, and we, and we could work together on an approach. You know, Scott mentioned there are several windowless classrooms in this building, so we may look at an approach to eliminate that, because that's part of the ed spec, is to get natural light into the classroom spaces. So those are the types of things that we would look at in a conceptual design study. Uh, but it needs to be based in your ed spec.
Hey, 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 guys, how long does that phase-two study, how long would that take? Because I know last year we were working on a timeline too, then it wound up taking, I'm forgetting, but it was, we approved it, I think, around this time that we got it. Mm-hmm. January, February, somewhere around the, around that timeline. What is, how, how long would a phase-two in-depth study take? So, you know, let's say we voted on it, you know, today, not that we would, but we voted on it today, and we said, okay, move forward, we have all the information. How long does that study take?
I think we would probably say about eight weeks, maybe eight to ten weeks.
Okay. And the, and, and do you guys have an idea, or maybe Phil or someone across the cost of that study?
Yeah, I, I think that was, that was part of the original proposal that SLAM made. Um, you know, we answered the Request for Services and broke it into two different phases, so phase one is complete. So I think contractually, you know, we, we have an agreement. Yep. To proceed into phase two.
I think we're looking at close in the upward forty, forty or so thousand dollars, Michael.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, fifty, fifty rang a bell, but okay, so forty. Okay. Okay. Thanks. Um, Chuck, Chuck, one, one last question for you. Let's say the numbers came in, because they're close. Say the numbers came in and the renovate as new wound up being somewhat more expensive, right? And the build is new. So your, your scenario that you mentioned earlier in the discussion. Whereby you can then theoretically apply. For the higher reimbursement rate in this case, that would be like the 22 or so percent. You mentioned that one case where they successfully did that, right? How often, how, what's the sample size there in terms of? How many of those situations have you come across? And what's the success rate in actually getting that higher rate? And, and, and I don't need specific numbers, but just literally off the top of your head.
No, I know they're very, very small, Michael. Uh, to be honest, that's the only one we've done.
Oh, okay.
I actually drafted the letter and, and frankly, that one was. Much more gray and vague in making the argument. Because there was multiple buildings. We were consolidating buildings into, uh, gray configurations from like five to four. We had two K to threes. Kind of four, five, and we were going to a pre-K to five and a K to five. So I made the argument that, well, we renovated these two existing buildings and kept the same configuration. This is how much it would cost. But in this, and I, and I pulled a couple of other statutes in where. State of Connecticut encourages looking at your district holistically and consolidating where possible. I use that statutory language. We're following your recommendation. We're reducing maintenance costs. In that, we didn't have an estimate on it, but we were, we have one less building. It's one less to maintain. For both the state and the, this is in the town of Madison. And, um, we kind of pulled a bunch of different, uh, items into that argument of why we felt building a new. Pre-K to five and converting one which they didn't request reimbursement for in the other project to convert like K classrooms. Um, and I think legislators had honestly had some, uh, influence with the Department Administration Services at the same time. We just helped to provide the numbers, but obviously the politics do help come into play. And my guess in your case, if it was close. Hey, you know, you guys, you know, the state's a benefactor, you know, look at your, your reimbursement rate. You know, you're, the state's a benefactor from the town of Weston and, and. I would make that argument too, that your ask is small. You probably don't go to the state a lot for reimbursement. Well, the additional 10 percentage points, uh, you know, I would argue that's a small. Small amount for you to ask from the state of Connecticut in return. You know, so I think it's just more than just the numbers. I think there's. Some, uh, additional help outside of the, the project team that could probably help with that, but I, I've, I've seen very few cases across the board. I know Slammer, uh, you know, Kim, Jim, if you guys have seen it, we haven't really seen it done many times, to be honest. It's been hard to prove that over the years.
No, I, I haven't seen it very frequently either. So, yeah, but I, I, I think Chuck makes a good point that. The, the ask from the town of Weston isn't all that much. And if you could make an argument to bump that reimbursement up by 10% through a waiver. I think that would help tremendously potentially. The passing of a referendum, a local referendum. I think it's a great story to tell. It doesn't always work numbers, number wise, but, um, I think you're at the point where. You know, that this phase two exercise is going to start to give you some of the numbers and focus in on, on what the right thing to do would be.
Okay. So clearly that's, you know, a topic, to say the least, um, is reimbursement rates and, and how to maximize those. David, I realized that I didn't call on you. I, I know that you had started with the, you know, what if there were more grade levels, uh, within, um, the middle school? So give me your other thoughts. Um, I'm looking at the time. We're, we're getting near the end. So what topics, um, that you haven't heard that you would like to dig into?
Actually, I've heard a lot. So, I mean, one of the things I've always say is five years on the board, I've seen a lot. I think that the one thing we definitely have to do is make a decision. And, um, I love the idea that we. Have the referendum in the fall. And if we can get to a June 2026 grant, great. If we can't, it's June 2027. Getting it right should be our guiding point. So I guess I'm not really asking the question, but process, I'm kind of answering the process question. I think. The fall referendum is a must. And the only, um. Question I think I have Michael answered, which is what is the next logical step? And can we be doing these things parallel? And it seems like the next logical step is phase two of the middle school. And we should. That should be one of the things that we're, we're looking at, you know, let's keep the progress going. And if we make June 2026, great. If we don't, it doesn't sound like what Scott's saying. We don't lose a lot of time. We just keep moving forward. So we're ready in June 2027, if not June 2026. So process wise, I have no question. That's process wise. I don't have any other questions though.
All right. Thank you. Um, all right. I'm looking at the time. And, uh, we didn't get into, uh, one thing that I wanted to, so, but that's all right. We can pick it up in, in other avenues. But I think everybody's brought up, um, great points and great suggestions and great questions. You know, what I'm hearing is let's look, uh, pre-K to 12. Let's look at grade configurations. Let's look at the number of buildings. Let's look at, and this, this would be my little point is in some of the earlier studies. There were some town needs that are very, you know, close to our school campus. Is there anything, um, worth trying to like, uh, collaborate on or, um, partner with? Um, if the town needs X number of space for whatever it is. And, and we can make sense educationally and what we want to do. Would there be a way of sort of, um, solving or? Providing some of what the town also might be looking at. But we need to hear from the town and that could be, you know, sort of very quickly done. I think, Michael, that was your point. And I think somebody said, uh, you know, put the options on the table. We. Don't seem to want to feel, um, locked in to. Any one, um, model at this point. But we do need, and I also hear, but we need to get moving on decisions fairly quickly. Uh, so that's a lot, you know, if we're going to talk three schools versus four schools, if we're going to talk different grade configurations. We need to hear on the grade configurations piece, we need to hear from, um, the, uh, the staff and the administration. You know, educationally, what makes sense? What's been the Weston tradition? What to other schools in our dirt do? Uh, what would be the resulting size of, uh, school buildings, et cetera? Will we be able to keep our class sizes, all the educational pieces? So we have to obviously also review the educational specifications if in fact we're going to, um. Alter or revise the grade configuration model. And then there are some very creative ideas out there. You know, what if we did? Something as. I won't say wild, but something as interesting as a magnet school. Whether that's, you know, um, how practical is that? And does it work? You know, my question is, does that work in basically a one horse town? You know, there's, we have one middle school. Magnet schools to me mean you have a choice between different schools. So how does that magnet model even work? In a, in a district like Weston? Not to say it couldn't, but it's an interesting concept. If we did some sort of specialized school with that appeal to our community educationally. I think is a better driver than just trying to maximize the reimbursement rate. I think we want to do what's right educationally first. So, okay. The last part, and maybe we can get at this very quickly. Because we do have a communication subcommittee. But I wanted to look at, you know, we need to involve parents in terms of providing. You know, a basis of information like tonight's meeting has been. And we also want feedback as we go down the road in terms of, as they're listening to our thinking about. Grade configurations or size of school, or where do you put parking or all of those sort of issues? And we also want to reach the wider community. There are lots of people in town that have, you know, no kids at the school. So, you know, we want to sort of reach out and figure out the best way to communicate and engage them. So I know the communication committee probably has a lot, you know, can come up with its own ideas. But if anyone wanted to add some right now, uh, that would be the last part of the meeting. So. It's not a have to. I, I think, uh, David and his committee can certainly brainstorm lots, but if there were ideas that people wanted to suggest tonight, now's the time. Okay, David, it's all yours when you get to your subcommittee. Nicole, did you have something?
I, I meant to say this previously and I, it's for it, but it's related. I apologize if it's totally off topic. But I learned a few months ago that by 2030, Connecticut buses have to be. Electric. And so that's something we need to be. Planning for and thinking about. So I was just wondering, is that something that should be considered? As part of, as part of a more holistic macro view of what's the physical plan of the campus? If this new school is going to be a real multi-year process, it kind of seems like both of those projects might.
Over. Yeah.
So I just don't know if that's something to also. Have on.
I think, yeah, I think that's a good one. Um, and that's kind of also with the town needs as well, you know, like. What, what, um, is going to happen to that space? I don't know the details of the, uh, the school bus. Regulations, but that's something else to look at. It may not be our first priority, but you're right to bring it up. That if we look, um, at this campus, uh, K-12. Um, obviously focusing on, on the middle school, you know, will be a driver. But there are other, other issues that are tangential to that and important from the town's perspective. From a grade level perspective, from building utilization perspective, from future enrollments. This Mike Zubba report on enrollment was very timely that we got that this fall. Because, um, you have your numbers for the next eight years and beyond. So those are helpful. Okay. Anything else for the good of the group?
Yes, I have something to say. And thank you for running a very tight ship. Lots of good input, good questions. Actually, the EOC did address many of these, so we need to share that. And disseminate that. But here's some fore, some foreboding. The fundamental operating assumption this evening was. We have plenty of time. Let's deliberate. We've been lucky for seven years that we haven't had a catastrophic problem with any of the four buildings. Our luck may run out sooner than we want it to run out. So my. Presence is that we're going to find that we're going to have a bigger problem than we planned for by being so deliberate. So that may sound a little alarming, but I'd rather be alarming after seven years of deliberation. Than relaxed and deliberate about. Every little piece that needs to be satisfied. So just take that away, right? I don't want to be the very bad news, but I've been at this three years and I've seen. How bad things can get really fast. I think Slam did a really good job and get into that, things can get bad really fast. So we better. Maybe move on our deliberation a little quicker than a little slower and get whatever we're going to do done. Not in 2027 or 2028, but sooner than later. I'll leave, I'll leave with that statement.
Okay, um, I hope that you also heard that we are aiming for a referendum in November. I don't think there's any realistic way of doing it sooner than that.
No, but I did hear, well, we can sort of do that and maybe do a reimbursement or do another thing in 2027. You, you don't have a luxury time anymore. You, you gotta start making some progress.
Right. I, I think a referendum in November moves us forward. Period. You know, with or without the grant. I think that's kind of. You know, I thought the, the grant was the thing that, you know, the tail wagging the dog and it's really not. The most important thing, what I heard tonight was to get to a referendum. And the grant application, um, is not going to make that much difference in terms of timing of actual project. And the getting this, the getting the, uh. The work started. I didn't, I didn't hear that that made a huge amount of difference. So Peter, I don't think that we're saying we're trying to delay or over-deliberate. Um, on the other hand, we don't want to be careless and neglect some of the, the issues that we ought to be looking at. So anyway, um, I'm certainly talked out. Is, does anybody have anything else for the good of the group? Jody?
Can I say something? Just as a reminder to people and for some of our new board members. On the district website, if you go under departments and under facilities. You are going to see a tab there that says Weston Middle School. And that is where you are going to find historical information on this entire project. And I am also going to be adding additional presentations like the ones that we had linked to tonight's meeting. They will be posted there. Um, and under videos, we're going to find, I will link this video there as well. So as we go through this whole process. I will continue to update this for you. So I just wanted to throw that out there because I know we have some new board members here.
No, thank you. That's helpful. And I know David has thought and, uh, Dan have thought about even highlighting a website, you know, a web tab even. Easier to get to. So that would be wonderful. So I do want to thank all the staff. Again, I know it's extra time for you that you did not expect. And thank you so much to both Colliers and Slam, uh, for being here tonight. Uh, we need to partner with you. You know. Continually through this process. We have Board of Ed meetings monthly, just on facilities. We have a lot of subcommittee work. We have, uh, Phil, you know, our, our leader in the field and Mike Del Mastro. Who's our facilities expert with all the institutional knowledge. So. We're going to need to just be working together a lot in the next upcoming months to get to Peter's point. So we don't waste time. And Erica, you know, thanks for leading the ship. And with that, I think I'm going without objection. I think I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Thank you, David. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any?